Good evening, and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas may be found at topeka.org. For cases that require public hearings, the procedure will be as follows. First, the Planning Department's staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take role.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Freed?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Canar?
Here.
Ms. Lawson?
Ms. Messina?
Here.
Ms. Ringler?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
We have eight in a quorum.
First item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from September 17th. Everyone has had a chance to look at those. Any questions, comments, corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 17th. Chris, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
abstaining.
And Mr. Armstrong.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. We will proceed on with declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte communications by members of the commission or staff. Is there anything that needs to be declared? Ms. Armstrong?
Yes, for the public hearing, Z-1805, my dentist is a part of the Gage Dental Group, but I don't see that as a...
No conflict, though?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other?
I see a different dentist, but not part of the group, but in the same building. But again, I don't believe it'll have any impact on my decision.
Any other communications? Conflict of interest statements? Ms. Ralston? All right, with that, we will proceed to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first item on the agenda is that case, Z-1805, Gage Center Dental Group. Mr. Nunavale?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Case Z-1805 is an application submitted by Gage Center Dental Group indeed for zoning reclassification from R-1 Residential District to O-N-I-2 Office and Institutional District for a quarter acre site located at 1329 Southwest Woodhall Street, south of Pontoon Street. The change in zoning to O-N-I-2 as requested will provide for expansion of accessory parking for the existing dental clinic located on adjacent property at 1271 Southwest Woodhall. The subject property includes a single-family residence that will be demolished to provide for an expanded parking area that will join existing parking lots immediately to the north and west for the clinic. The existing single-family residence was constructed in 1951, and the property has been zoned R-1 Single Family Residential since that time. Based on the zoning and land uses of surrounding properties, the subject property is a remnant single-family land use amidst commercial office and higher-density residential uses. The purpose and intent of the proposed O-N-I zoning district is to provide for a limited range of non-residential and non-commercial, excuse me, uses such as general-purpose office, professional, or administrative operations. The district shall not permit those uses and activities pertaining to retail, product display, installation, service, or repair. An objective of this district is to provide for a transitional buffer between districts of lesser and greater intensity, and to restrict the intensity of use to a low to moderate range to encourage compatible design with adjacent use and development. A very limited range of office and commercial activities are permitted in this O-N-I, in the O-N-I district such as bank, finance, institution, funeral home, health, service, and clinic. The increase in parking stalls as a result of the proposed zone change is not required to provide minimum off-street parking for the existing dental clinic as is already provided for, but is intended instead to supplement available parking for the added convenience of dental clinic users and staff. Any development pursuant to the proposed O-N-I-2 zoning will require landscaping and buffer yards in conformance with TMC 18235 landscape requirements. The Topeka Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040, LUGMUP, includes the subject property and adjacent properties on the west side of Woodhall Street on the future land use map as urban, suburban, low-density residential, while properties on the east side of the street are designated commercial. Although the west side of Woodhall Street does include this residential designation, it should be noted that the dental clinic has been operating for many years and serves as an appropriate transitional use between the commercial centers to the north and east and residential uses to the south and west. The proposed zone change is consistent with the LUGMUP in this regard. The proposed change in zoning will have no anticipated impacts upon transportation or traffic within the area. The applicant, as required, did conduct a neighborhood information meeting on September 27th. However, no one besides the applicant team and city staff attended the meeting. Staff find that the proposed O-N-I-2 zoning to be compatible with the zoning and land uses of adjacent properties and in the surrounding neighborhood, subject property being comprised of a single-family residence, is not particularly compatible at this time with the surrounding commercial, office, and higher-density residential uses. While the zone change will support an expansion of the existing parking lot for the Gage Dental Clinic, the parking for surrounding uses will not be impacted and indeed could be assisted in terms of expanded parking, obviously. The change in zoning to O-N-I-2 will allow the owner to provide this additional off-street parking and will likely have a positive effect on nearby properties and residents because it will help to prevent parking congestion on Woodhall and Hillsdale Street and averts potential problems of clinic customers using parking in private parking lots. Based on findings and analysis in the staff report, planning staff do recommend approval of the zoning classification from R-1 Single Family Residential to O-N-I-2 Office and Institutional District as proposed, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. We would like to have the commissioners ask any questions or anything that you need to have clarified by staff.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions. I don't know when I'll ask them all, but is there currently, based off of the findings from staff, a need for more parking for this company?
No, there hasn't been particularly reported parking problems in the area.
Okay. All right, I'll save the others.
Any other questions for staff at this point? We're going to now open the public hearing portion of this case. If there is the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to step forward?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kevin Holland, Cliff Flatt, Mr. Trouble Engineers representing the Gage Dental Group. We also have Dr. Jeffrey Burkett here if we need to ask any questions specifically of Gage Dental. But to address some of the issues that we have is a two-story dental office that has doors coming in from three different sides, and so for them to grow, it makes parking very difficult in certain areas. And adding a new parking lot in this location not only helps the connectivity of all of the lots so that you can drive in and not have to go back to either Woodhall or Hillsdale to get into another lot, but actually, a lot of the staff is now parking on Hillsdale just because of the convenience to get into the dental office from either the south or the north door. And so, a lot of it is geared for growth in the future of additional dental staff, and then, of course, making the parking lot a little more usable. But I could answer any questions if you do have them.
Mr. Holland, so the southwest lot will connect to the new lot, will connect north to the other existing lot?
That is correct. That is correct. And it's what we would anticipate. Currently, the handicap access into the building is in that southwest lot, and then there's a little bit on the north portion that comes into the lower level. But we would like to extend the handicap parking a little bit further to the east on that southwest lot to make it a little more accessible.
Madam Chair, are clients allowed to park on the east side of Woodhall in that parking lot?
You mean across Woodhall to the east?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's a... You can't say they don't or they wouldn't, but it's not Gage Dental's property, and they don't have permission from that owner to park there.
So, they don't have permission?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, instead of having them park on the street, we would rather have them park on a lot.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have the ability now to hear from members of the public or anyone else who would like to speak to this case. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to it, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this case. Commissioners, is there any other discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, I do have conflicts with this request, seeing the amount of parking that's available in this area. I drove over there this morning, and again this afternoon, and kind of looked to see what the demand was for parking. I didn't see any, and we could ask the owner if there's a certain percentage days out of the year where they have an overfill. I don't see why there couldn't be an agreement across Woodhall and a potential crosswalk added to that street. The idea, just from looking at this and from what I've heard, I don't see adding another parking lot as being helpful to this area, and those are my thoughts.
Just from my own experience there, I do go in on the north side, and I've been there a few times when there aren't any spaces on the north side available, and actually, the east lot has been full as well. So, I've seen those two completely full mid-morning and have to go to some other option at that
Other questions, comments?
I guess they mentioned growth. I'd like to know what their potential growth is, if they can come back up.
All right, Kevin Holland, I have to clarify with Dr. Burkett. Currently, they have seven dentists in the office, and they are looking to add one to two.
More, in addition?
Into, yeah, into the Gage Dental Group. And that's, I think it would be very difficult, knowing the ownership across the street, to be able to get that agreement in place.
Okay.
It's not typical of something that would be, just because of certain owners in town that don't typically like to give up parking spaces, even if it does look like they have abundance.
Okay. Is there an idea, do you know, of how many spots they would anticipate would be needed for two additional dentists?
Well, it depends what time of day, but we were looking to add eighteen, eighteen to twenty spots. And it would be landscaped, and as Mr. Nunavale stated, following all of the city criteria for landscaping.
Thank you.
Any others?
Actually, Madam Chair, in terms of expansion, I understand one to two dentists at this point in time. Would that fill the capacity of the building, or are there additional space for expansion inside? Could they expand beyond that down the line?
I don't believe they can expand any additional. Their nine dentists, they're currently... Yeah, I don't believe they have the capacity in that building to go above that.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for the applicant or staff? Yes, I see your point. I definitely am not a fan of more parking, but I understand the desire for it in this case.
It seems to me that they're being proactive and thinking ahead for this, and also, I am sensitive to pay people where so, expanding accessibility to people with handicaps seems like a good idea, too.
I'm not real excited about having the option, being forcing people to walk across the street and inserting a crosswalk, creating disruptions to traffic in that regard. And I also, in another location, they relied on parking across the street, a large parking, shopping area, and then suddenly that went away into a mixed-use development, and all that parking went away. And so, suddenly, there was a lot less parking than they had indicated when the development first went in. So, I'd rather have them rely on their own parking on their own property.
Other questions or comments? When ready to make a motion?
Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the governing body of the reclassification of the property from R-1 Residential to O-N-I-2 Office and Institutional District.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Chris, would you take role?
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
No.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes eight one.
Thank you. The next case on the agenda is Z-1807 by Turk LLC or TRC LLC. Mr. Nunavale?
Yes, Madam Chair. Case Z-1807 is indeed an application submitted by Turk to ERC LLC and proposes zoning reclassification from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-4 Commercial District. The 1.3 acre site is located at 1834 Southwest Topeka Boulevard. The change in zoning to C-4 as requested will provide for reuse of a property as a tunnel car wash along with vacuum stations, and in the way of a definition, a tunnel car wash utilizes a conveyance system to move a line of vehicles forward through a sequence of wash, rinse, and drying functions. The subject property includes an existing building and parking lot, as have been for many years, a portion of Shore Honda Auto Dealership, currently in the process of relocating to a new facility. The existing building on the subject site was constructed in 1981 as an auto showroom with the addition of auto service bays on the east side of the building completed in LI Light Industrial's C-4 uses to the north, south, and east are generally auto-oriented businesses, while to the west, across Topeka Boulevard, is located the Kansas Expo Center. The purpose and intent of the proposed C-4 zoning district is to provide for commercial uses and activities which are intended to serve as a community or regional service area. A very wide range of office and commercial activities are permitted in the C-4 district, although many such uses are provided for within the I-1 district as well, per the current zoning. A variety of potential light industrial uses permitted in the I-1 district will, of course, remain in effect for properties adjacent to the north and south, or north and east, of course. The proposed change in zoning will have no substantial effect on landscaping requirements pursuant to the city's landscape requirements, with landscape plans to be reviewed and approved as part of the site plan review process. However, proposed new landscape requirements currently in process and being drafted, if adopted by the city, will affect landscape requirements within all C-4 districts, including the subject property. So, too, although non-residential design standards are not yet in effect, it is anticipated that new construction on the site will be required to adhere to such standards as may be approved by the city in the near future. And lastly, all kinds of standards are in flux, although revised and updated signed standards for new development are currently being drafted. Signed standards in the C-4 district currently are the same as the I-1 district. The Topeka Land Use and Growth Management Plan 2040, LUGMUP, includes the subject property and surrounding properties on the future land use map as commercial. Is existing flood hazards or associated with nearby Shunga Creek, with the entire property being located within the 100-year floodplain and the south edge of the property being within the floodway. Such flood hazards will affect development requirements on the site. The proposed change, excuse me, the proposed change in zoning from light industrial to C-4 commercial will have no anticipated impacts upon transportation or traffic within the area. The applicant conducted a neighborhood information meeting on September 26th. Information was presented on the project, including a preliminary site plan indicating access points and other design details. Meeting attendees expressed support for the project. Staff find that the proposed C-4 zoning is compatible with the existing and desired future character of the neighborhood, given the largely auto-oriented commercial businesses within the area, including repair shops and tow and salvage lots, as well as the institutional use to the west in the form of the Kansas Expo Center. The property is part of an existing, being part of an existing auto dealership. Although currently not vacant, the auto dealership is in the process of relocating, with the property then being vacant until such time as new uses are established. An existing auto dealership often does not easily transition to a new use. The timely reuse of at least a portion of the larger property is more desirable and supportive of other uses being established rather than the entire property remaining vacant. All essential public services and facilities are, of course, presently available within the area in that it's developed. Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, planning staff do recommend approval of the zoning reclassification from I-1 Light Industrial District to D-4 Commercial District as proposed, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Just for clarity, I think, was there a typo there? Is that D-4 or C-4?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That is, that should be C-4.
Okay. Making sure we're on the same page. Are there any questions for staff? Any other typos you want to point out?
I do have one question. So, is this, is the zone change just so it would allow potentially for the car wash, or is it intended to actually move a car wash into it once the property is vacated by the dealership?
That's it, Commissioner Freed, yes. There is a company that operates car washes that are intent on coming in, yes.
Thank you.
And that car wash is not, a car wash is not allowed in the I district.
Madam Chair, and just to clarify, there was no pushback from any residents in the area?
No. Commissioner Messina?
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? We will open a public hearing for this case. The applicant or the applicant's representative is welcome to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Kurt Daniels with Cochran Engineering, representing Turk LLC. Yes, there is an intended car wash coming. We're excited to be here. We think it brings a good amenity to the area. And with the correction of D-4 to actually C-4, probably don't have anything further. So, I think Mr. Nunavale did a very good job, and I don't think there's anything else I can add. But I'm glad to answer any questions.
I have a question or just a clarification. I saw in the, there was a letter submitted referencing the public meeting. A couple of people apparently had questions about the floodplain issue, and there was some talk about the site, the new site would be raised a little bit. Is that right?
Yes, the new site would be raised to bring it up out of the floodplain to meet floodplain requirements and also the city of Topeka. And one thing I did mention, we also did get an email in support of it from one of the individuals who were there. So, we should have passed that along to you, but it will be raised up. There'll be retaining walls to make sure our finished floor elevation is up out of the floodplain and meet all requirements.
Any questions for this applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak to this case? All right, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing at this point. Commissioners, any discussion, thoughts?
Madam Chair, I think this is a good plan.
Very happy to see something going in. I don't want to see a vacant lot there forever and ever.
Yeah, and there's not one of these on that corridor that I can think of.
Really anywhere close to downtown. There's not anything. Any other questions, discussion? When ready to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the reclassification of the subject property from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-4 Commercial District as proposed.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Chris, there's been a motion and a second.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Z-1806 TKG 125 LLC. Ms. Ralston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a case by TKG 125 LLC, Ted Graff, requesting a zoning change from the I-2 Heavy Industrial District to the D-3 Downtown District. The properties are located at 125 and 121 North Kansas Avenue. Each of the properties contains approximately .17 acres per parcel. The change in zoning on 125 North Kansas Avenue to D-3 will accommodate the reuse of the second floor for three residential loft apartments that were completed in 2018. The planning department had inadvertently approved a building permit for the apartments without having the proper residential zoning. Residential uses are not permitted under the current I-2 zoning district. The owner of the adjacent building at 121 North Kansas Avenue is a co-applicant to allow the future conversion of his building to residential. That owner has no plans in the near future to convert his building. The purpose and intent of the D-3 Downtown District is to reestablish linkages between downtown and the Kansas River through the redevelopment of the area north of Crane Street to the Kansas River. Staff does consider most of the area north of Third Street and east of Van Buren to be potentially suitable for D-3 because of the fact Crane is in close proximity with potential future access to the Kansas River. Industrial uses... Industrial uses in D three are limited to contractor yards, manufacturing processing type one, self-storage type one, micro-alcohol production, artisan manufacturing, commercial bakeries. Warehousing, storage, and distribution is generally not permitted in D three, although existing storage in these buildings will be allowed to continue as legal, non-conforming uses or accessory uses. It's anticipated storage-type uses in D three will be addressed in a future code update. The owner, an applicant, conducted a neighborhood information meeting. There was one resident, one property owner at that meeting, the owner of Lardner Cut Stone West on Van Buren. Concerns of that attendee with the impact of future residential uses within this existing industrial area, as well as the uncertain timing of the future of the Poconce Viaduct, and how this may affect changes in the area. The area alongside the north edge of I seventy, which is the Poconce Viaduct, is characterized by a mix of light and heavy industrial uses. D three zoning is generally compatible with the mill block. However, the zoning is potentially not compatible with surrounding uses on the block. Surrounding character of the existing neighborhood is industrial. Some of the uses in the current I two and I one zoning are generally not compatible with future and desired use of the neighborhood for downtown. Buildings were historically used for storage and warehousing in the late nineteenth and early twentieth century. The upper floor of this building at one-twenty-five was converted for residential in two thousand and seventeen. Existing building at one-twenty-one is historically and is still being used for warehousing and storage. Proposed zoning change to D three does conform to the Topeka's comprehensive plan for reuse of the mill block. The LU GMP designates the subject property for downtown land uses and envisions the area redevelopment for a mix of uses, including high-density residential. Zoning changes for reuse and conversion within the downtown area are important to implementation of the comprehensive plan. However, there is the potential for some compatibility issues as the area transitions. The subject property at one-twenty-five has already been converted for residential on the second floor, so the I two zoning is no longer appropriate there. The D three classification brings it into compliance. A change in zoning in the previous and planned renovations of the building should have a net positive impact on the properties. The addition of residents will help support retail services within proximity of downtown. There is potential for some effects to occur on surrounding industrial landowners as ongoing expansion may continue in this historically industrial area. However, considering the surrounding uses and the mill block and the other previous rezoning actions on those properties, there should be no overall harm to the public health, safety, and welfare, as well as denial of the rezoning does impose significant hardship upon the owner, since the building has already been converted in the area. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm open for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Driver, you were talking about the actions taken previously. We did rezone the building on that southeast corner, correct?
Yes, that property was rezoned, and just a couple of years ago, as well as the properties to the south rezoned within the past five years, or past fiver.
And they've been making substantial improvements to those buildings and converting those to residential?
So this pretty much completes the rezoning on the block, except for the one on the north, northern edge, which is still pretty much being used as a warehouse.
Thank you.
Any questions for the planning staff at this point? At this point, we will open up the public hearing. If there is a representative of the applicant who would like to come forward?
My name's Ted Graff. My wife and I bought this building about two years ago, right after the mill block district was put in place to be an historic building. And we've been working on it since then to get the three apartments put in.
Are those apartments occupied at this point?
Yes, they are.
I'm assuming that the residents are aware that they live in sort of an industrial, mixed-use area. They're not...
I think it's more they're aware than historic buildings.
Okay.
And they like the idea of what we tried to maintain as much of the historic parts of the building as we could when we were redesigning.
The being so close to other industrial uses, noise, smells, that type of thing hasn't come up?
No, it's really not much, because we have the bridge on the east side of us there. So there's really not much coming up of there. And then the building to the north of us is our storage facility, and the bus barn's across the street of Crane. So really, the industrial part and the noise part hasn't bothered us at all.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this case? We'll close the public hearing then. Any discussion by the commission? Thoughts, questions? Especially since the residential use has already been built. As long as, as long as residents know what they're getting into, I don't think that there's, I know we had a case a couple of months ago where we were doing a zoning change to the downtown district designation, and that was one of the questions that came up, was that, you know, being in this area, is that going to affect your residential tenants? And they seemed to indicate that they actually liked that environment. All right. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, I move to recommend to the governing body approval of the reclassification of the property from I two heavy industrial district to D three downtown district.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chris?
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Lawrence?
Lawson? Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Last case on our agenda is Z fifty-five forty-three K, Gauge Center Master Plan Unit Development Plan. And Ms. Driver?
Thank you. This is an amendment to the PUD master plan for Gauge Center that will allow a gas station and convenience store classified an automobile service station type one that would be located in the easternmost building on the east side of the Gauge Center strip, in the area that's outlined as subject development area on the aerial for you. The proposed revision will apply to building site F only on the PUD master plan. This requires a major amendment subject to the provisions in eighteen-one-ninety PUD regulations, since the change is deemed by the planning director to be a change to the use and character of the development. The PUD master plan originally permitted only a retail store or restaurant within this area designated as building site F. The property is located at thirteen-oh-one Southwest Gauge Boulevard, comprises one-point-seven-eight acres of the entire eighteen-acre PUD boundary. The applicant's proposing a seventy-six-hundred-square-foot gas station and convenience store with eight gas pumps. Gauge Center was originally developed for its neighborhood community shopping in nineteen-fifty-nine, was substantially remodeled in the early two thousands. The PUD has undergone approximately seven revisions. This proposed development site historically contained a restaurant, showbiz pizza place, and prior to that, a Safeway grocery store. Most recently, the building contained a tanning salon and fitness center. A part of the building still contains a hair salon that will remain after a demolition of one-third of the building. Southwest Gauge is classified a major arterial street. The site is proposing to use the existing driveways on Gauge. The existing traffic count on Gauge is approximately twenty-thousand-five-hundred average daily traffic. That's south of the intersection. Applicant held a neighborhood meeting on September twenty-sixth. Approximately thirty people, including the applicants, attended the meeting. Their key concerns were related to access, where the driveways were going to be, lighting, and hours of operation. Attendees were also concerned about the lack of retail tenants within Gauge Center, poor lighting on the current site. They also have concerns about cut-through traffic traveling through the Westboro neighborhood. The applicant submitted a traffic impact statement at the request of the city's engineer. That was intended to address impact of the new use as compared to the previous uses, as well as to verify the new use will not create hazards at the existing driveways. The state statement does not recommend new traffic control on Gauge. City's engineering division accepted those findings. The applicants do propose to extend driveway peninsulas at driveway one to better accommodate queues, not impact traffic flow on Gauge. The character of the surrounding site is commercial in nature to the north, south, and west. The neighborhood west of Gauge is comprised of single-family dwellings. The proposed gas station and convenience stores should increase activity at Gauge Center, in some ways improve the appearance of the center. Zoning of surrounding properties is all-zone PUD planned unit development for commercial uses. It is intended for a mix of commercial and office uses at the intersection of two arterials. The last prior use in this section of the building was a tanning salon, fitness center. The section of the building, however, has been vacant for at least ten years. The community shopping center was remodeled substantially in two thousand, but in recent years has begun to decline, which is becoming evident by its lack of retail tenants and shopping tenants. The construction of a new gas station and convenience store is also a viable use for the site. It's likely to attract new visitors and potentially contribute to upgrading the appearance of the center. The proposed commercial reuse of the existing site for a gas station and convenience store is consistent with the comprehensive plan, since it's within a community commercial center. It's located at the intersection of two arterials. The proposed site demonstrates conformance to the nodal commercial development policies of the comprehensive plan. The changes to the site are going to be mitigated through the use of landscaping along Gauge. The building's exterior will comply with a type-B standard in the proposed City of Topeka Non-Residential Building Design Guidelines. The city's engineering division does not recommend additional traffic control measures on Gauge, and has concluded the street system is adequate to serve the new development. Further, the use being considered allows only an automobile service station type one. It does not permit the more intensive automobile service station type two, which are those facilities providing repair and service-type garage uses. The proposed change adding the new gas station should have an overall positive impact on the area. It should be harmonious with the surrounding properties because of added site and landscaping design, and overall should have a positive impact on the other, by adding another retail component to the site. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report. The applicant has agreed to the conditions in the staff report, and I'm open for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I'm sorry, because I don't under, when it says the peninsulas of both driveways shall be extended, can you explain what that, I just don't understand what that means.
If you see on, oh, let me go to the driveway. Okay, if you see on the aerial where you have driveway one and driveway two...
Yes.
They have indicated they will extend those medians further in, so that you don't have queues queuing, you don't have a line of traffic queuing up at those driveways.
Okay.
So they'll extend those further in.
Thank you.
Such that, such that a car entering won't be able to turn left into, and will be forced to go further into the development and come back to get to the gas station?
Yes. Yeah. They will have to go, they will have to go around in front of the building, so they won't be able to make a turn directly in front of the canopy island. In front of the canopy.
Now that, now that I understand what they're talking about, if you look at this plan...
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you look at the site plan.
Then it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. They would have to go to the west of the canopy.
Yeah, and come around from the west.
Question. So does the, has the PUD plan been updated to reflect that? It has been.
No.
Looks like one side has and one side hasn't, maybe.
We are leaving that as a kind of more of a condition that can be addressed at site plan review.
Okay.
So the PUD is conceptual in nature, so it's not intended to be site-specific.
So the same thing could go for the fifteen-foot landscape setback also?
Yes.
Because that's not shown on there also?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Other questions for staff at this point?
I have one more question.
Sure.
It involves the lighting. And that you probably haven't, at this, at this stage, probably haven't received any specifications or fixture that you could look at, but those canopies typically are pretty high, they're about fifteen-foot high, and they light them up really a lot. So the note in there about the fixture has to be shielded on all sides, or recessed or pointed downwards, is something that you really need to keep in mind when you're reviewing for site plan approval. And I don't know, I don't know if you have to add anything to the note or the condition, but it's something, a lot of times, a lot of times that note pertains to parking lot light poles with shields on them, but when you have a soffit on a large canopy that's just burning bright in the middle of the night, there's, there needs to be a way, or somehow, that they need to show that they can shield that light, or make it directed downwards.
That question was brought up at the neighborhood meeting, and they did indicate that their lighting would be directed downwards, so, but no, we have not seen anything specific as far as what they're...
Okay, just something to keep in mind when you're reviewing those down the line.
Thank you.
Because it is right across the street from the residence.
Yeah.
Ms. Driver, can you expand a little bit about the concern about cut-through traffic? I'm having trouble understanding why that would result in traffic cutting through Westboro.
From, that was a question, or some comments that were brought up at the neighborhood meeting, and from what I understand is they were concerned about the people using York Way and Avalon, which are the two streets between Hantoon and Fifteenth, in going through, in going through the neighborhood, so. As a cut-through.
Which can be done right now, as it stands.
Right, and that's already, that can already be done.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not specifically related to this development.
Hold on, hold on just a second. We will get, we'll get to the public hearing part. Any other questions or discussion? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion. Is, if there's a representative of the applicant who'd like to start off?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Kevin Holland, Cook Flat and Struble, representing Hag Oil. Tom Hag with Hag Oil, Tony Tremble with Hag Oil is here. So I think, taking a little his, I know Annie did a good job of explaining the things that have been here. Most of us that know this area remember this as the vintage back in the day, and that building that's there is going to get cut back, about a third cut back towards the west to give room for that canopy out. If you want to take a visual of what they're anticipating it to look like, if you would go to Twenty-Ninth and Topeka Boulevard, the brand-new Hag Oil, it's a Phillips sixty-six at that location, but that is a Hag Oil. They're looking to replicate that same, it is on the southwest corner there in that Holiday Square, and it's not quite that large, because there's a liquor store at Twenty-Ninth and Topeka Boulevard. So if you look at that without the additional tenant there, is what they're looking to do. In quoting Mr. Hag, there's a couple of draws to placing gas stations that are successful, and that's, one is the highway, which we don't have. and that's one is the highway, which we don't have access to that's readily accessible. But the other is rooftops, and so when... And looking at this area, there's 3,000 rooftops within two miles of this location. Those people are most likely getting their fuel in other locations and driving to work and getting fuel near their work. So hopefully, what this location is going to keep them closer to home, or give them an availability to fuel up near their homes. I can answer any other... Lighting. The lighting is going to be the same, or proposed to be the same, at 29th and Topeka. It's LED. It's recessed up into the canopy and points straight down. It's not the old-school where it spreads light. It's pointing straight down nowadays, so it is a little less daunting than, say, it was 10 years ago when we would... Our Dark Skies Initiative was probably not a very successful venture, but, you know, access, and hopefully that was pretty clear. Just adding it back so that when you stand out there, people try to immediately turn in or turn out, and that causes that conflict at the entrance location. So it'll pull it back, so you can get about a two or three-car lineup before. And then I think one of the points that we can talk about, a lot of the people, a lot of the folks that were there at the public meeting were very excited to actually have some economic development going on at this location. Gage Center has had a lot of great days, and right now it's a lot of darkened storefronts. So having a little bit of economic development might spur a little more in this area as well, so it's a positive feature. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right. At this time, it is a public hearing. We would like to hear from any members of the public who would like to speak to this case. If you would just state your name for the record.
Bill Paget. I live at 3637 Southwest Yorkway. And it is true, it's a cut-through street right now, but there's really no destination at the end of the street other than Gage. So there really is no gas station in that part of town. There's a little kind of gas station-type thing down Gage, but their gas is 30 cents a gallon higher than everyone else's, so no one goes there to buy their gas. So this gives people a reason to come down Avalon and Gage, because you'll miss 15th Street, you'll miss the traffic lights on Gage, and suddenly Yorkway and Avalon dump right into this gas station. And so what I'm concerned about is the traffic on the streets. If the traffic does increase, is there a way to put in, you know, traffic bumps that they use in other cities? Charlotte for one, which is where I'm from, helps save my dad's neighborhood, and Lawrence uses them as well to cut down on traffic, using that street as a cut-through. You know, we do need the gas station. It'll be really convenient. The light will be a real issue, because it's... The darkness is kind of nice if you want to go outside and look at the sky in Westboro, because you can actually see the planets and the light. So that's my concern, is the traffic coming down that street, and that's what I voiced a month ago at the last meeting, so... I don't know if there's any... Is there a listing? Do you measure how much traffic goes down the street before you make decisions on it? You know, what's the process on that?
We can ask staff about that in a second. You may or may not know this, but anecdotally, maybe you have an idea. Where are people cutting to and from through that neighborhood? Because I would think going down Huntune or up, what is that, 15th, would be a lot easier.
Well, you miss... You want to avoid Huntune because of the potholes on Huntune. You know, it's not the smoothest road in the city.
Okay.
So you're also cutting through to miss Gage because of the traffic on Gage. And so you'll come to... Like, I just came down Cambridge earlier today, because it was 4:00 in the afternoon. I came from 10th Street down Cambridge and missed all the traffic on Gage. So... And people do use the street as, you know... People come down that street. There are no stop signs in Westboro, so people don't slow down. You know, they kind of look, and they just keep on going. I don't quite know why there are no stop signs in Westboro, but I'm not from here. So there's really... It's kind of a straight shot, and that whole side, the only other gas station that you have is all the way at 17th Street and Washburn. On the other side of Westboro and College Hill, you've got that one. The other ones are on Wanamaker. So this is going to create a tremendous amount... I mean, it's going to be busy, because there's nothing... You've got 21st Street on that end. There's nothing going out Gage at all, all the way to 70. And so it's going to be a busy, you know... It's going to be a busy place.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this case?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, committee, for listening to me. I have it all written out. I listened to all of your quotes and your studies that you've had, and it's all great. I'm living here. I'm living it. This is my story. My name is Artis Griffin, and I reside at 1412 Southwest Wood Hall Court, Topeka, Kansas. I'm the president of the Wood Hall Group HOA, and I am representing the HOA. We, and the board members, and other residents of our HOA, went to the presentation, and we heard the proposals for the changes to the Gage Center's master plan to allow a gas station and convenience store to be put on this site. After reviewing the plans, we have concerns about the increase of traffic, and our area is on 15th Street between Gage and McAllister. The planned new owners are expecting an increase of cars and of traffic to make their adventure a thriving and profitable adventure. We wish them well. This entire location has been abandoned for quite a long time. Gage Center has been showing areas of disrepair and poor lighting, so we're excited, thinking that new life is coming back to this area. With that being said, there is concern about the increased traffic that will be developing on Gage and on 15th Street. The U.S. Post Office, which I think our post office is used more than any other post office in the city of Topeka, is right there on 15th and Wood Hall. And you can... It's there. Which has a heavy amount of traffic on 15th. We are asking, please, for 15th to be a no-parking area from Wood Hall to McAllister. It is already a no-parking zone from Wood Hall to Gage. We are asking for the extension made to include the area from Wood Hall Court to McAllister. On occasion, the roadway is very congested and hard to maneuver. The businesses and apartment complexes have ample off-street parking for their customers and tenants. We would appreciate it if you would take your concerns and consider our request to make 15th a no-parking zone. I do not think you realize how much traffic there is there. It is a lot. Maybe you could put a counter on 15th Street. Maybe that would help to convince you. The end.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I invite you over to my house anytime.
Thank you.
Maybe just a clarification. Do you think the addition of no parking is going to...
It is not going to help. When you have 15th Street, and you have cars parked on this side, and cars parked on this side, you can only get one car down 15th Street, where it's supposed to be a two-way. That's why when you guys were talking about that first proposal over there with that houses, I should have spoken. I am so happy that you guys passed that, because Hillsdale is wall-to-wall, one car goes down it, because all of the doctors there are parked on Hillsdale. But I did like... Can't my mouth shut? I'm sorry. I thank you for passing that.
Any other questions or clarifications?
As I said, I invite you over.
Thank you.
Play Dodge Car. Thank you.
Any other...
Any questions?
No. No. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak to this case? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussion points? I don't know that we have it in our purview to do anything about the parking other than suggest to staff that maybe they make a note of that and see if there's another way to make a request. I don't know the process for a member of the public requesting something like that.
Madam Chair, yeah, to address the sort of the traffic process, neighborhoods that have concerns over parking or cut-through traffic have and can still request a, basically, a mini-traffic study for their particular point of concern through the city's engineering division. And the city's traffic engineer and that division would go out and assess the current condition and whether there was warrants to mitigate any concerns there. We've done that. I say "we." The city has done that in some other neighborhoods upon request. So while... If this was supposed to be something that this development had some overflow impact into an adjacent area, that could be germane. Our staff and then city engineering staff did not feel that there was. So... But that's not to say that there couldn't be something in the future as well. So it's not something that we would go out and proactively install, something that is counter to current conditions. But if the future conditions warrant it, it can be measured, it can be assessed, and then appropriate countermeasures employed. So I think that's kind of the take here, is we don't... You have to remember, this entire center is zoned for commercial development. This is just a change in character, because it's not... A gas station wasn't one of the permitted uses, but retail restaurant is a very highly on-traffic-intense type of use. So the impacts here are probably more focused on the ingress/egress of the site, the safety of that off of Gage, and as well as the circulation on the site itself. But to date, there was no finding through the city engineer's office that this was a concern beyond that immediate area of the development.
By a way of trying to help the property owners for future... When you say "the neighborhood," is that like the Neighborhood Association?
Sure. The Homeowners Association absolutely could request to, if you haven't fore, which I assume you haven't, but maybe you have. Okay. Certainly, meet with and contact the city engineer, and they would sit down with you, understand what the concern is, particularly for 15th. The cut-through, same thing, and I think it would be worth... It sounds like you have an existing problem right now that you want addressed, so I would do that right now.
I just want to make sure that we were trying to get people to the right place of the city.
Yeah, everyone understand, there is... There are avenues to address any impacts that result in this development. At this point, we do not... We, being the staff, as well as the applicant's engineer, do not see that as being an issue right now.
All right. Any discussion questions from the commission about this proposal? I think I understand the traffic issues, the lighting issues. I'm happy to see a vacant use, or a vacant property coming back into use.
I would echo that I'm happy to see a building that's been empty for 10 years going to have some use for it, and perhaps help revitalize that center. I appreciate the concerns that have been raised about the traffic, but we're already at a pretty high-traffic area. I think anything that does well for that center is going to generate traffic, so I'm certainly going to be supporting this.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Sure. Based on the findings and analysis in the staff report, I move the Topeka Planning Commission forward to the governing body a recommendation of approval of the proposed PUD master plan, along with all conditions.
Second.
Further discussion? Chris?
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Ms. Messina?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Freed?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes nine with zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is discussion items, review and discuss standards for incidental and temporary signs in all districts. Topic near and dear to my heart.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Topic near and dear to my heart as well. So tonight, we were planning on a little bit more to give you. The item says to discuss standards. Keyword there being "standards." We do not have any standards to present to you tonight, so the second keyword was "discuss." And we can discuss, but I think we... Mike and I talked a little bit about the best way to present this to you, and just having a general discussion about the issues probably, without giving you the standards as well, probably wouldn't be the best way to proceed. So what we'd like to do is come back in a more comprehensive way and hit on... Have a draft set of standards for you in terms of the temporary signs, which I know you now wait for. Does that say... Incidental signs, which are just a... They're more... That's more wonky than probably we're going to get into with you, if the committee gets into it, but anyway, but they'll be covered, and we'll come back and discuss and have an actual draft that you can react to a little bit more, because right now we have more... We have more questions than answers, and that's probably not a good place to start with you at this level. And we want the committee to see those standards before they come to you as well. So I think tonight, what I asked Mike to do is maybe just... They did meet with the technical committee this week? This week? It's... I'm sorry. It was last week, because today's Monday. It shouldn't be this week. I wasn't here last week. And still not. So the... So the, just some takeaways from that committee meeting, kind of a general direction that Mike's going to go with, and then turn that into some more specific standards, and if that's okay. Is that okay? So we'll have a tiny discussion with no standards tonight, so.
Committee?
Yeah.
The direction. Yeah, I think...
The thing about temporary signs and incidental signs, there are a lot of details to it and a lot of different pieces. And some of that came out of the committee meeting. And the committee, it was so, not very long ago, and we still need, we need some, I need some feedback from our consultant on some of the questions. So some of the things that, some of the, I guess, takeaways from the meeting were that some types of signs, if you're going to accommodate them, how big can they be, how, you know, how can you accommodate one type of sign and not another type of sign when you're trying to remain content neutral? So that's one of the questions. I won't get into too much detail, but that's a question we need to explore a little bit more. Also, I think what I learned were, was that with temporary signs, there are so many different types of signs, and realizing that when we are going to something that's content neutral, where you can't refer to a sign by its purpose, you have to just refer to a sign by the way it's constructed or the way it's used, that you need to make sure that you've accommodated all types of signs, or you're going to run into some issues with standards. In other words, if you allow one type of sign, in order to accommodate realistically and reasonably one type of sign, and if you lump that in with another type of sign and treat it the same way, you're going to end up being too permissive on that other type of sign. And it works both ways, it could work both ways. So that's something that came out of that. Also, I think some things need to be fleshed out a little more in terms of how things are recommended. So instead of going over all this with you now, we have a lot of information, instead of doing that now, it's better to do that at the same time you're actually looking at standards, and we really just don't have standards for you yet. If you have any specific thoughts, specific concerns about temporary signs or other types of signs that you want to express tonight, it'd be a great time to do that. It'll help us develop standards. But you certainly don't need to feel compelled to do that. Are there any questions? Any thoughts?
It's a good time of year to think about temporary signs because there's lots of them.
Yeah, I think if you push this off a month, they'll all go away.
What is the committee's thought, I guess, on those arrow signs that I am obsessed with? Say lightly.
I know. Yeah, right. Well, just what's the overall thought?
Well, Commissioner, our Chairman sits on the committee, and so she might have a different recollection of what I'm hearing, but I think that there's not, we made it clear that the community has expressed their concern about those signs, and that something needs to be done about them, maybe curtail them in some way, control them.
Negative comments? So negative comments?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's what we heard in our survey, and just individually, people will say that face-to-face sometimes. We expressed that to the committee, and we talked about that. We didn't say specifically what the end solution was, but we didn't get, what I didn't hear from the committee was, we need to find a way to accommodate those signs, or we need to find a way to save those signs. I also didn't hear real forceful language about those signs, we need to get rid of them. But, so I think that that's where the committee stands on it. I think it's more going to be driven by what the general public feels. And again, we have to, we have to be really careful how we write the code, so it's effective, so it's content neutral, and also so it can be enforced.
So there's still another stage where it goes back to the public before it gets approved?
What we anticipate is we'll have another meeting with the committee, and we will draft standards for them to review, and then we will bring those to you in a form that's easy to digest. In other words, not, we're not going to hand you a code. It's going to be in a tabular format, kind of the way we presented some of the earlier standards. Then you will give us feedback. You could give us some very specific feedback. In fact, that's what we'd want. And then from there, we would kind of have a more broad outreach program, determine who needs to, who that audience is that needs to see this. And we would get more feedback from the public. I suppose that would happen around the first part of the year. We're going to be getting into the holidays, so outreach between Thanksgiving and New Year's is great if you don't want anybody to give you feedback. But we sincerely want feedback, so that's what we anticipate. And then changes would maybe be in order, and then we'd bring that back to you. There's probably a one or two meetings where it's just presentation for discussion before it is presented to you for a recommendation, a specific recommendation in a public hearing. So there are going to be multiple steps. Does that sound correct to you?
Yes, that's exactly right. We need to go back to some of the specific stakeholders, but we want you to see, we want you to weigh in first. We want the committee to weigh in, then you, and then we'll go to the public before we ultimately go to a public hearing before you do that. So I think that works, that's kind of the model we've used, because when you go out with a blank slate to the community, it's, you get a blank, you get everything. And we want, we want to help that feedback be constructive.
So Madam Chair, Commissioner, as far as the stakeholders for those signs, there are a number of different stakeholders, because those signs are used by small businesses, they're used by schools, they're used by churches, and I think there's going to be a lot of interest. And I think there are at least 200, 250, 300 of those signs in use throughout the city. And we are actually...
She's so cool, guys. She's so cool. Love that.
Are you guys also, are you also talking about duration and potential limits on signs of certain types?
Well, so temporary signs right now in the code, it says they're limited to an event.
Duration.
Duration of the event. So sometimes that can be a little vague. You know, what's an event? And so that's an issue. One potential with the portable signs, the portable message centers is what, that's kind of the encompassing term for them, is, you know, do we treat them like temporary signs? So that's one way to address those. But the other issue with temporary signs, and this is always a difficulty with temporary signs, is people don't want to have to get a permit for temporary signs. The city doesn't have a lot of staff time to process permits for temporary signs, but how do you enforce time limits, duration, if you don't have a permit or some kind of system for doing that? And there's a lot of research material out there on this. There's even, you know, one suggestion to use a sticker program, someone puts a sticker on their sign. It's not a permit, it's much easier to get. But anyway, I told the director I wouldn't get into the weeds on this, which I want to do sometimes, but yeah.
So if you have any thoughts, we would love to hear them, because it's really complicated. I realized that at the last meeting. There's so many different signs you don't even think of. You start driving down the street, and you're like, wow. Feather signs, all kinds of stuff. Wow, okay. Balloons. Do you?
Well, if I may, to maybe close this up, or not to close any discussion here, but my thoughts that I wanted to get out to you is the direction, you know, that we will cut, that we've been, we're kind of going down is, we're not necessarily, would be more restrictive in the restrictive sort of sense. We're going to probably end up with more types of signs in our code than we have now. There's just different, there's the, they're going to be broken up a little bit more, but I think it's hard to talk in generically here, so even though I said don't get into the weeds, just as an example, you know, you think of a real estate sign, okay? You're not going to see a real estate sign in the code that comes back to you or the standards that come back to you. It'll be called some, it and other types of signs that are set, you know, in the ground that have whatever message they have on them, are just, are going to be a yard sign or a freestanding sign or whatever we end up calling it. It won't be called a real estate sign. It won't be called a advertising sign or a contractor sign or whatever. So I think that is, that's to make it more justifiable and constitutional and legally defensible, based on the Supreme Court cases that have been heard and been decided for content neutrality. We can mess with the size of it, we can mess with the height of it, we can mess with how long it stays out there, what it looks like, but you cannot use any of those, you can't read the sign to determine its regulation. So that is definitely a direction we're going in. It will probably lead to a few more sign types in our code. It will also probably lead to some being more, having more of a standard that allows some, you know, reasonable spacing. One of the surveys comments that we got back, we have very low marks on those signs that where there was a lot of signs together, obviously. But a well-kept, you know, a single sign that's, where you don't have a lot of them together, that's probably what will, the path we're going down. And so I just throw that out there, but we'll have to address the feather flag, for instance. We'll probably have to have, does everybody know what a feather flag is? It's those blade, big-bladed signs.
Oh.
And those are 15 feet tall. So we just can't group that in with other temporary signs, because then all temporary signs would have, could be up to 15 feet tall. That wouldn't be something I think you would want either. So we have to have a separate, just for feather signs, a separate standard. We have to have separate standards for signs that are on the wall, signs that are attached to a post, signs that are attached to the ground. So that's the sort of sign types we're talking about, not the cigarette signs or real estate signs or political signs even. That's, you won't see the content to define the type. So our schedule is, good news, we will probably, we don't have any cases next month. We will probably take that month to put the standards together, have the meeting with the committee, so we probably won't come back until December to have that more comprehensive discussion. And so, that's good. We hope. So, yeah, so we can hit the public after the holidays with a little more of this and see what happens. Anything else? Any other questions or comments or direction you want to give us? Now is a good time.
Good time, Mike. In terms of, I assume part of the purpose of this is to reduce the amount of temporary signage that we have. Is there a limitation? I'm not familiar with the code as it currently stands on how many days a business or a location can have temporary signage? Even though it may be multiple different signs at different periods, but you're talking about a temporary sign based on an event. Well, if I'm a retail store and I have a different sale every couple of weeks.
Right.
Do I have a limitation on the number of days a year I'm allowed to have? Is that something that's...
It's like those three-year going-out-of-business sales.
Right.
There are some limitations, I think, there's some limitations, like how many times per year or something, isn't it? Or is that...
No, it's, we don't do, our code doesn't do a good job of quantifying the event period with the number of days you can actually have that per year. It does not do a good job of that. So that's part of our issue of trying to enforce something like that. It's virtually impossible to do the way it's written right now. So you can have, yes, you could have a sign, you could have a sale every other weekend, and you would never, you would always have a sign in your yard, in your property. So, yeah, that is, and we don't, we do have a numeric limitation, which is one per property. So that's, that is quite restrictive.
That's freestanding signs.
Right. One freestanding per property. Those are the ones that would be in the ground. So that is, when you think about certain sizes of property, that could be pretty restrictive. So we might look at a spacing standard that could be reasonable, but yeah, that's part of the issue, is how long? Other codes we've looked at do put 30 days, 60 days, some sort of days on their signs. So that would be preferred, I think.
Any thoughts on signs at this point? And other communications to the Commission?
Yes, one more. You probably have noticed we have a new Commissioner. We want to welcome, yeah, we want to welcome Corey Dean to the group. Yeah, Dennis lost some height there. So, yeah, we want to welcome Corey. As you may know, Corey is an architect with Schwart Design Group. So between him and Matt, I think we've got this design thing covered. So appreciate his service and stepping up as, and I think he'll fit right in. I don't think we have scared him away yet. Wait till we get into signs.
All right, is that everything? All right. I am ready to adjourn. Anyone object?
No.
Thank you.
It seems you would give your opinion.
Very good.
Sorry.
I didn't get it.